Some new microphones here, can everybody hear that okay? Wow, we gotta be careful what we say. Alright, appreciate everybody coming out this evening. We're gonna start off today with invocation by Dr. Rollins, so if you'd like to participate in that, please feel free to do so.
Let's pray together. Dear God, you've blessed each of us abundantly and we thank you for every blessing. Today, we thank you especially for this work, for the purpose it gives to our lives, and for the many special privileges it provides as we try to help each of our children obtain a quality education and thus a better way of life for themselves and their families. We pray that you would cause each of us to focus, to recognize the importance of what we do, and to constantly give our best effort. The children count on us to do that every day. We ask that you'd be with us in our meeting this evening and help us always to make the decisions that only take us forward. Amen.
Alright, is Sally Roach here? Great, come on up here Sally and lead us in our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll call you back up here in just a second, okay? Alright, I would like to officially call the meeting to order. I think everybody has had the, alright, let's start with the agenda. Is there any changes or additions, attractions need to be made to the agenda?
The agenda would stand as presented.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda then, as the president.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. McFetrich, a second by Mr. Ombi, to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, now, everybody has had the minutes from last month's meeting to look at for several days now, are there any changes that need to be made to that? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So...
Alright.
I'll second.
Who was first?
I thought it was Kathy.
Okay. Was it you? Okay.
I'm like a microphone.
I'll second.
Awesome. Alright, so, is there any further discussion about that? Not? Everybody in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Alright, now that brings us to the time of the meeting when we would like to hear from any patrons out there that have any concerns. If you'd like to speak, please come forward now, tell us who you are, where you live, and tell us what your concern is. Just be aware that we cannot act on that tonight, but we would definitely like to hear from you and we'll get that to the appropriate person. So, is there anybody out there that would like to talk to us tonight? About anything? No? One once, one twice? Okay, great. Alright, Dr. Rollins, we'll pass it off to you now.
Mr. President, let me invite our student rep from Harbor High School to come back to the podium. Sally, thank you. We're very glad to have you here this evening. I know you have family members with you, would you like to introduce them before I introduce you?
This is my mom, Julie Roach, is with me tonight.
Well, we're very glad to have you and your mom with us this evening. Sally is our representative of Harbor High School, she's a senior this year. Her parents are Brent and Julie Roach. Sally has attended the following Springdale schools: Lee Elementary School, Shaw Elementary School, Tyson Middle School, Central, and now Harbor. So you know our district pretty well, don't you?
Yes, I do. I've been blessed, I've been blessed to be in here my whole life, so...
Well, that is great. Well, I expect, we've all been blessed to have you as well. So, she is the senior class president of Harbor High School. She is the Blue Crew Student Section Leader. She's very involved in the Distribution Education Clubs of America. She's taken AP World History, AP Literature and Promotion, AP US History, and is now taking AP Language. She's also taken many business courses while at Harbor and plans on having a career in the business field. She intends to earn a double major in college in advertising and business administration. We're very, very glad to have you here this evening. I know the board would welcome any comments you might want to make.
Well, basically, Dr. Rollins said all there is about me, pretty much. I've been in this district my whole life, I've attended, I think, six Springdale schools. I'm at Harbor this year, I've been blessed with the opportunity to be the senior class president, as well as leader of like, the spirit squad, which is totally my thing. I love school spirit and I'm totally with Dr. Brackett on celebrate Harbor and we're just trying to really boost the image of our school and trying to get some, some good spirit. But, yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot to say, other than thank you guys for what you do. I just got my ACT scores back today and I'm blessed to say that I'm gonna be able to apply for a lot of different scholarships because of the education I've received, so the likelihood of me going to college and coming out debt-free is very high. So I'm glad about that. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I would love to answer them, so...
I'd love to hear about your plans for next year.
Well, it's kind of a, I've pretty much narrowed down where I want to go to school. My parents both attended Harding University in Cersei, it's a private Christian college, and that's pretty much the only school I'm applying to, just because that's where I've always seen myself. I've gone back and forth different ways, but I'm, my heart truly is down in Cersei, Arkansas, so I'm completing the application process right now, gonna get some interviews for different scholarships there and hopefully go free, so...
And after school, is that...
Yes, advertising, I really want to have a creative job where I'm in charge of people because I really do like more of an administrative position, but I also, I love to use my brain and my creativity. I don't want to work behind a computer all day, I want to be with people, I want to talk, I want to present, so just anything in advertising, preferably like a creative executive or director, just for any kind of advertising firm would be ideal, so...
Awesome.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Well, it sounds like you've got things figured out for now?
Yeah, we'll see.
Hopefully it'll all work out just the way that you hoped it would, so...
Are your parents here?
Yeah, my mom's here.
So how'd you do on your ACT?
Well, I got a 32.
Hey, that's good. Yeah, that'll open up a lot of doors for you.
For sure.
And if you can bump it up another point or two, it'll open up a whole bunch of doors.
Yeah, I know.
That's awesome.
We'll see.
That's really good.
Thank you.
That's two basketball points.
Okay, we're not...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sally. Board, I know how proud each of you are of our students. Sally's a great example of, I recognize her, that wonderful role model, and I would just share with you, we're also very aware of, that we're the second largest school district in the state, where the cultural diversity in our school system is, is rich and phenomenal. And just in way of information, this is, this week is National Hispanic Heritage Month, so we might take note of that as well. I've asked our principals of our high schools to come forward and I know they have some introductions of their student leaders and maybe continue to get a little broader understanding of the, of the activities that are planned for the school. So, Charlotte, would you like to begin? That's great.
Yes, actually, Archer Learning Center, I'm gonna first. You, Bill, and Donna, and Jesse, we're gonna talk a little bit about, they're, we started last year with a council of innovation, and they were on that council, so they're gonna talk a little bit about the student level.
Is that microphone on? Is there a green light there? They're new microphones, they all need new batteries, so, sorry.
Last year, approximately 55% of students attended Archer Learning Center daily, and our goal this year is to increase our attendance on a daily basis at least 80%. Next, we're gonna talk about seminar days, something that was student-based. Archer will implement seminar days once a month. Students with less than two absences and all assignments in good standing will be involved in college career projects, job shadowing opportunities, and focused enrichment courses. Students who have more than two absences for a month, per month, will be involved in focused intervention that best meets individual, individual needs, sorry. Students who are absent on this day will need to schedule a parent meeting for their first day back at school and will be required to attend night school that same day.
This is our seminar days, they're all college and career-focused, and also the students who qualify can do job shadowing or go work other jobs.
Benefits we have discovered this year, ever since we started seminar days, we have noticed that we have an increase in people learning how to talk to each other. We haven't had any issues, we've had groups of different ethnic backgrounds of all getting along and actually participating, coming to school and actually engaging in whatever we have to offer them. And we feel like we've made a lot of progress because last year, the cafeteria was kind of empty, and this year, we have a lot more people there. Do you all have any questions?
So you go with 80%?
Yeah. It's actually going pretty great. We've had more students come in because, I mean, I guess the academic experience of going to like NTI or NWH, et cetera, is like giving them like assignments and see what they're gonna do after high school.
So on the seminar days, do you actually go to NTI or NWH or wherever? Okay, that's good.
Our first seminar day was at Cross Church. We went, we actually got to socialize, learn how to get along, and we learned leadership skills.
At Cross Church here in Springdale?
Yes, sir.
Well, keep it up, doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board and Dr. Rollins, I want to introduce to you Spencer Chang. Spencer is our student council president for this year, he's done a phenomenal job and I'm gonna let you fill in kind of what their goals are for Springdale High School this year.
Thank you guys for allowing me to be here today. Like you said, my name's Spencer Chang, I am the student council president at Springdale High School, and I just want to kind of take a minute to allow myself to explain to you guys kind of what student council does at Springdale High School. So, as president, I lead and organize the events that Springdale High School hosts in order to show our school spirit, so our pep rallies, our homecoming dance, and also our senior slideshow that student council puts together. We work really hard to make sure that everyone enjoys it and not just the people that put it together, but the entire student body and the faculty as well. Also, as student council president, I work, I try my hardest to model what the traits of a successful SHS student looks like, so I work hard to keep my grades up, I'm involved in a lot of extracurricular activities, and I hope to be a role model to a lot of other students, not just the students, but to some faculty and even students outside of Springdale High School. I also work to personalize every student's experience at Springdale High School by getting them involved in other activities that we do, such as football games, soccer games, and everything like that. I think it's really important for a student to attend those kind of activities. I also work really hard to communicate with the, not just the student body, but the faculty as well, because I feel like their opinion isn't as voiced as it should be, and I feel like their opinions are very important in our school. I also talk to them about the cultural differences that we have in our school, and I hope to almost dissolve some of those, because I feel like we're a large family at Springdale High School and I want to, I want to unite all of us more than we already are, and I want us to become, feel more comfortable with each other and be a family. Do you guys have any questions?
Is student council in charge of homecoming?
Yes, sir. We're in charge of decorating for the dance and also electing court members, and they get to pick their, whoever they walk with, senior football players.
And that's coming up, right?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Good job. Board, anybody else?
But, I just change that you want to say...
I like the way that our sponsors work to organize all of the, I guess, the standings that student council. I know that the student body votes on who's on student council, so it's not just one group voting on everything, we take in the voice of the student body and we put that out into the public, and it's not just student council, it goes, it's almost like a hierarchy, it goes from the student body to student council and then further on.
Well, thank you for being here.
Alright, thank you very much.
A senior that representing Harvard tonight is active in other clubs as well as our student council president, including the Blue Crew, German National Honor Society. She is a chairman of the board for the National Honor Society, actually. Outside of school, she is active as statewide Presbyterian Youth Advisory Team, and serving as a youth co-moderator for the Presbyterian of Arkansas this school year. Another senior leader at Harbor High School, Serena McLaren.
Thank you for introducing me, Dr. Brackett. I'm gonna talk about Harbor's goals for this year, our focus, and so Harbor's really lucky to be in a town that supports us and supports our athletes and band and clubs, but something's been a little lacking at Harbor the last few years, and that's definitely been school spirit. So this year, Harbor's focus is to increase student voice and participation so that Harbor can have excellence in everything we do. By increasing pride in Harbor, students will perform better on academics because they know they're representing a school that's worth doing well on tests and in classroom. To do this, Harbor's created a new club, Blue Crew, you've heard mentioned a few times. The goal of this club is to get students involved, anyone can join, and we make posters and advertise to go to games so that our school is more of a community. As student council, I'm helping increase student participation by promoting the homecoming and clubs and athletic teams are, can make floats for our homecoming parade so that the whole school's involved with that, and we're just focusing on celebrating our accomplishments this year, so hashtag celebrate Harbor. I guess I'm supposed to ask if you have questions?
Board, anybody that'd like to ask a question?
So how many students were at, I mean, I was out of town, so Wednesday night there was a volleyball game.
Oh, yes.
So, how many students were there?
Oh, I don't know of the amount, like, 100 or 150, just a significant amount based on what we had in the past, because we are advertising for it and we are like having themes, so the theme was, oh, frat out Fayetteville, like, so, increasing that and getting students to come and participate.
So is your next big event, homecoming also?
Oh, yes.
When is that going to be for y'all?
It's October 7th is the game and 8th is the dance.
Okay. Week after Springdale, so. Well, good job.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
It's an honor for me to get to introduce Mr. Miguel Hernandez to you tonight, he's been with us since we started.
He's been with us from day one. He's been an outspoken student voice in everything that we do and absolutely reflects what we want our students to look like at the School of Innovation. So Miguel, please.
Hi, my name is Miguel Hernandez and this is my third year at SOI and I'm a sophomore this year. Thank you guys for your time. Something big at the school this year, you actually have a, it's amazing, it's something that we can do, it's something that we feel serious, first, the way our classroom is set up, they're not traditionally classrooms, we have another area, and that classroom is, it's a more vibrant classroom. Not only that, but a lot of the days follow that, it's, our setting has changed, it's so refreshing and constantly changing. Not only that, but this year, our advisory is running so much better, no longer do we have one-year plans, we have 10, 15-year plans, we'll each try each other, our advisors are constantly helping us to be accountable to all of our brains, turning decisions, making sure that we are also... It's honestly been a really big help. Not only that, but this year I'm in marketing, and marketing has so many big plans for this school year. This year, we are starting DECA. Not only that, but we plan to start a school store where we sell school merchandise and supplies to the students, you know, anything they could possibly need throughout the school day. Throughout this year, we've seen that a lot of students have gotten sick, and thanks to the technology that we have at our school, they are able to miss school and still be able to get, to progress throughout the school year, thanks to all the great technology that we have. So, any questions?
What do you like most about the School of Innovation? What's your favorite thing?
It has to be the classroom settings, you know, that really doesn't, it's a really big deal for me because I am taking AP History this year, and the setting that we have is completely different, you know, there's chairs where we can move around, we can roll a little bit, if you will, but it's completely different, it's so, it's so refreshing, I like it, it's great.
Is there anything that you miss, now that you have your own building, having moved from the Jones Center, is it, is all so much better to have your own place?
Very much better.
I can believe that.
Anything else? Well, thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
So we've learned two things tonight, one is rechargeable batteries are important, and two, don't leave your mic on or the batteries will run down over time, so Mr. Hatch is working quickly to come behind and replace them as they're popping out here and there, and I appreciate him for jumping in and doing that, so. We are gonna do a couple of introductions with a couple of people tonight so that you can see who is, who is here with us, and we're gonna start with the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, and I don't know if you know the volume of what that means, but it's a, it's a very big honor to have that, and not only to have that in our district, but to have two teachers who are honored with that. So I'd like to ask Ashley Casnicka and Cassie Kotzer to please stand, Hellstone Middle School and Jones Elementary School. I feel like they should bow or something really amazing, cartwheels or something. We definitely appreciate your service and thank you both for taking time to come here to be honored by the board, I know how excited they are, yes. Next, we've got Julie Crane, who is Springdale's nominee for Arkansas Teacher of the Year. She has been named a regional finalist for that state honor, which is also, in her own right, a major accomplishment, so I don't know if Ms. Crane, could you stand? So I don't know if you get the feeling, but you are surrounded with excellence, which is, which is amazing. Congratulations, Ms. Crane, that's amazing. We also have two scholarship recipients, and from the same organization, given to two people in the same district, which is also an anomaly and not heard of often. I'd like to ask Lynn Ryan and Jonathan Buchanan if they will stand. They are recipients of the AAMLA Scholarship presented by the Arkansas Association of Middle Level Administrators, and they will be using these scholarship funds to progress their education, which is so great. And I remember specifically talking to Ms. Ryan and Mr. Buchanan about two years ago, and they said, "Should we do this?" And I said, "You should totally do this, it will be awesome, and Christmas is coming anyway, so like, why not go to school?" And so they did, and, and are well on their way in their education, and I have to tell you, hearing from the professors of the, of where they go, they sing nothing but their praises, which shouldn't surprise you at all, so congratulations. Continuing on with excellence, you got to hear from Mr. Joe Rollins with the School of Innovation as he introduced his student council leader, and I would like for him to please stand. He is your brand-new, feels like a pageant, principal, he is your brand-new coordinator of career and technical education, and he is the president-elect of Arkansas Career and Technical Educators Association, which we refer to a lot as CTE, so he will be the incoming president of that organization, so congratulations to you, Mr. Rollins. And last but certainly not least, I would like to ask the TOSSAs that are here to please come forward, they're like, oh gosh. There's only two or three, so we're gonna just line up here, do you want to trade us out? I mean, trade me for him? We can do like a Rockettes moment, thanks. This was, these are for your voices, so that's the reason we're switching mics. So in case you don't know, these are your TOSSAs, and I feel like we should jazz hand it, and, and they cover the gamut from technology to literacy to math to science and social studies, and you have heard me brag on our teachers and on the instructional facilitators, and these are the people who help wrangle all of those different threads to bring it to culmination of what you see on our website. And so it has gotten acclaim at the state board level, it's gotten acclaim at the national level, it's gotten acclaim from the US Department of Education, and outside of our country, which is, which is amazing, and so I just wanted to take a moment to honor them for, definitely for their work and their time and their dedication, most of all, their patience. And I wouldn't say for the teachers, I'd say for with me, which is, which is great. They are an awesome group to work with, and we are so very blessed to have them in this role, and so extremely blessed that Dr. Rollins allows us to do this most important work that really tries to frame and shape-shift our district. Nothing like this is happening anywhere in the country, and so to say that it's happening here, and to say that we're building it here and we're putting it up here is also a big deal, so please give them a hand for their work. Thank you all so much, thank you. So, next on the agenda, Dr. Rollins? I'm sorry, we're gonna...
As our TOSSAs are seated, please explain to the board how their work is not only influencing our delivery of instruction, the districts all around us and across the state are using their work as well.
Yes, so we have teachers in all of our classrooms who are spread across all of our schools, and they each, in each building, have an instructional facilitator, and the instructional facilitator, their job is to work with teachers, and then they serve as the conduit with the TOSSAs. So TOSSAs are observing in classrooms, they're working with instructional facilitators, and they're taking all of those common denominators to help finalize what the curriculum looks like, so teachers provide model lessons, they provide input, and that is the collective knowledge that you see produced on our website. And, and the differing factor, which is what Dr. Rollins was referring to, is in the state, there are other districts who have curriculum, but there are not other districts who have curriculum who publish it and put it out on the web for critique and, and everyone's input, and so I think the TOSSAs would all collaboratively tell you that they have much thicker skin than when they started, and cooler heads prevail always, but it is a risk to do that, to put your work out there on display for everyone to, to take part in, but I will tell you, we have, there is not a day goes by, even on the weekends, that I'm not talking or coordinating with another district who wants to access our curriculum, who has questions about it, and I would say the same is true for them. It is unbelievable, the response that we've gotten from taking such a risk, and so Dr. Rollins truly, his motto is "All Means All," and he really means that, and he doesn't mean that just for kids, he means that for educators also. We just hosted Pulaski County Special School District last week, and amidst legislative brunches and everything else that we have going on, and he took time out of his day to stop what he was doing and come in and take time with them, and, and that means so much to the people that are coming here because they come to Springdale to see him, and so it's important, and so it's, it's amazing, it really is amazing, and we are certainly thankful.
So people are finding that button in the upper right hand?
They found the button in the upper right-hand corner, yes, sir. They love it.
Thank y'all for being here, appreciate it.
I want you to know how much we all appreciate Rollins here. The theme for the year, like from your board, is personal reflection. The Fame for the Year, right from your board, is personal reflection each one. Freedom from that is generally, freedom from that will be testament. Freedom from that is a feature of our school. Thank you very much. Give him a hand. Thanks, group. Dr. Freeman, will you come up and join me for just a moment? Did you hear what I said, board? This is Dr. Annette Freeman. As of hours ago, or minutes ago?
As of 10 o'clock this morning.
Very good. You want to just wow them, just show them how brilliant you are here, will you?
Thank you so much. I just appreciate the support of our school district in allowing me to conduct this study that I did on systematic and explicit phonemic awareness instruction, and I'm just ready for the next chapter in my life. But, thank you.
What do you do after you become a doctor? What's the next step?
I'm not sure yet. I think I'll sleep a little more than I was.
Did I hear pre-K through 20, is that what I'm on?
Pre-K, yes. K-20, Educational Leadership.
Well, you'll have to go back to school and get that pre-K.
Yes, Dr. Rollins, I will, thank you.
That's great, good job. In front of you, Mr. President, is a, this is a very preliminary agenda, just kind of a place for us to get started. I love doing this with these ladies, they are phenomenal leaders. I say I give them a place to start, and that's really what it amounts to. This won't change a lot, but the point is that we want to have our dedication for the Lynda Childers Knapp Elementary School on the 21st of October. And if you would try to schedule that as best you can, from 9:00 to 11:00, and it will be a great event. If you notice, I kind of tried to touch with my preliminary agenda here, I tried to touch on the schools in the district where Lynda had been principal. And so, there's a lot of entertainment, as you can see. But we'll have a lot of fun out there, and we'll look forward to our honorees' comments, for sure. She's a phenomenal leader who's touched us all, and has helped make our school system what it is today. So, thank you, board, for dedicating this school to her. You've seen just a few changes in our board meeting, our board agenda tonight. The next session on the agenda is really a teaching session for all of us. The more we can learn, the more in-depth we can understand the various initiatives of the district, I think the better position we'll all be in to lead in the future. And so, we're going to look at literacy for all tonight. I really want us to take a look, as we address that broad scope, try to get a better feel for where we are with reading. We continue to grow and extend our own information. Dr. Moll should be participating in a national event in just a few days now, to help bring some of the current thinking back on how to teach reading to all kids from all backgrounds. So, we're looking forward to that. So, maybe if you will, if you'd come back and give us appropriate set for this session, and thank you for putting this together.
Yes, sir. So, Dr. Rollins talked to me about two months ago, and said, "I think that we need to change the format of our school board meeting." And I said, "Oh, boy, what does that mean?" And he said, "He would like to include some additional information for you guys to be able to become more immersed in what that looks like." And I realize we do school board lunches, but we are going to have topics each month that we'll be bringing to you, that will give you a highlight and an overview. Obviously, I can't tell you all that we need to tell you in 45 minutes about literacy. But what I can tell you is you have a blue index card that's behind your microphone, and that blue index card is super important, you would not want to lose it. And what it means is that as you have questions on the presentations that you are hearing, that you would write your name in the upper-left corner, first and last name, and if you have specific questions, I will follow up with you after the session is over. Because Dr. Rollins has informed me that I need to be within this timeframe if I would like to come tomorrow, and I would. So, I am determined, although we're six minutes behind. So, I'm going to first introduce with us today is Ms. Darlene Freeman, and she is, of course, over our pre-K group, and she's going to be talking with us. As Dr. Rollins said, our goal for you is to understand the chronological existence of what literacy looks like. And that, of course, in Springdale begins with Ms. Freeman. It is how do we go from learning to read, to reading to learn, which is very different. Components of reading that you're going to be hearing about are reading, listening, writing, and speaking, all of which are the essential ingredients that you must have in learning. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Darlene Freeman, and she is going to talk with you.
Good evening. You know I have the best job in the whole district, don't you? I get to work with 1,343, 4, and 5-year-olds that are so eager to come to school and so eager to learn. So, we learn lots of things in pre-K, but we also learn to read. We start with models of the students' names, that's really important. A child's name is one of the most important first words they can learn. And then, we have lots of singing, we have lots of poems, we have lots of books we read. We encourage all of our teachers to read at least six books a day to every student. There's lots of vocabulary in those books that they do not get, just in conversation. So, we encourage that. We talk about the parts of the book, we talk about the author and the illustrator, we model alphabets, we talk about first letters in their name, we find that in books. We model words, we model sentences, we talk about what letter we hear at the beginning of a word. We write anchor charts with the students, and we immerse the students in all kinds of letters and alphabets. They play with letters in the sand, they play with letters, they make Play-Doh letters. We do all those kinds of things, to make learning fun and real for kids. So, basically, I know I'm on a really short timeframe, but do you have any questions? I've given you a few documents there, just for your reading pleasure, if you will. They're from Arkansas Advocates, with some really good research on the benefits of pre-K. We had a meeting with those folks last week, so I wanted to share that with you. And basically, come see us anytime.
Definitely, I didn't have enough Zoom in for the doctor part, but I hope that you will welcome back Dr. Annette Freeman.
I love seeing that.
Yes, I bet, I bet. I know, it's like, "Oh, gosh, that feels official now," right?
It does feel official.
So, we've talked about what P2, what is happening in the pre-K, and then now we're going to talk about what's happening with kindergarten through second, and then we're going to talk about what's happening through 3 through 5. And so, Dr. Freeman's going to give you a set for this video. The thing that I told Dr. Rollins that we wanted to try to capture is it's hard for us to talk about these things and you not to see them. And so, Mr. Jones was kind enough to go into the buildings, capture some video, and so we'll be watching some video throughout the session, so you can actually see this happening. So, you'll want to kind of sit back and relax. And Dr. Freeman, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, at the first part of the video, you will see one of my teachers, Heather Miller, a 4th grade teacher, and she will scaffold instruction using authentic text. So, you'll see her meet, she'll meet with three different groups of students, using the same text, but providing different levels of support. The second video, you'll see Ms. Casey Poole, a 1st grade teacher, and she will be teaching a small group phonemic awareness lesson during guided reading.
Thank you.
Can you see it first? Can you repeat that for me? I will-
I will.
Recognize-
Recognize.
And spell-
And spell.
Sorry, erase the, oh, final-
Final.
S-family-
S-family.
Blends.
Blends.
Very good. Hmm, who can remember those? Final S-family blends. Where's your penny? What was one of them?
S-T.
S-T. What sound does that make? Elias, will you put a penny in and tell us a word that has the final S-T blend? What about-
S-T.
That was at the beginning or the end? Okay, what about this word, right here?
Nest.
Nest. So, let's sound this one out, here we go. Landon?
Nest.
Nest. Okay. So, S-T was one of them, what was another one of them? G-O?
S-K.
What two letters is S-K?
S-K.
Very good, S-K. Do you know a word that has S-K at the end of it?
S-K.
Oh, is that the end? S-K. Eight. Do you know one?
Desk.
Oh! Desk. Can you spell it for me, G-O?
D.
Uh-huh.
E.
S.
Uh-huh. Awesome. Okay, let's do it together, here we go.
D.
S.
Desk.
You say those two really fast when it's 70s out.
You do, but you hear both sounds, don't you? The S-K. Very good. Okay, hold on one second. All right, let's see. Valeria, do you know another final blend that we talked about? Spoon? When do you hear S-P? When do you hear the blend in spoon? In the beginning? Do you remember one that was at the end? Let's keep our pennies still. Can we help her out?
Wasp.
Wasp? Wasp, what two, the two letters of those?
S-P.
S-P. Okay, so, and then you said wasp? Okay, let's sound this one out together.
Wasp.
Wasp. And I want you to just listen and follow along the first time. Can you do that for me, Landon? Okay, so, let's take the ends of our highlighter, and I want you to follow along as I read it, okay? So, let's start with the title. The Wasp. I'm going to read it first, okay? "A wasp is basking on a post."
A wasp.
In a second, just wait till I finish the whole poem, okay? "I asked the wasp what she likes most." "A crisp red apple is the best. I'll take the rest back to my nest." Okay. Now, this time, we are going to read it again, but you're going to read it with me. Okay, and while we read it, let's be looking for our S-final blend words. We're going to be like detectives, okay? "A wasp is basking on a post." Let's stop right there. Basking. Do you know what basking is? Landon?
Like flying through the air.
Flying through the air? Well, let's look at the picture, can you look at the illustration at the bottom?
He's not flying. Oh, he's like landing.
Okay, he's sitting, okay? So, do we, what do we think that means then?
By his, by his stomach. He's, he's the apple, and he's going to take it to his mouth.
Okay, okay.
He's going to take the rest of the apple.
Okay, but basking means he's just kind of laying there, just resting, taking it easy. Being lazy, that's what he's doing, okay? So, let's practice this. "The wasp." There, do you see? Let's try it again. "The wasp." Okay, so- Make sure those ears are open, and that you're paying attention, so you don't miss those S-blends. Here we go. "The wasp." Oh, let's try it again, one more time, here we go. "The wasp."
We're going to be discussing this question. "What can I learn about a character from his thoughts, words, and actions?" And we have it posted up here. And our goal is, "I can describe and analyze a character using his or her thoughts, words, and actions." Now, the character we're analyzing today is a boy. And the story we're reading is actually a true story, we've talked about it just a little bit.
Good, we're going to start over, for those of you who didn't get it the first time.
Wasp in there?
Talked about it just a little bit.
Technology's awesome.
...using his or her thoughts, words, and actions. Now, the character we're analyzing today is a boy. And the story we're reading is actually a true story, we've talked about it just a little bit.
So, why don't you talk about what you're seeing in the 4th grade?
Okay.
Dr. Freeman?
What she did, she brought three different groups up. In the first group, she had them create a project. The story was the boy who harnessed the wind, and he built a windmill to help bring water to his village. And so, the children had to research that, and then look online, and then create a project in which they taught more about that person to other members of their class. And then, there's a second group she brought up, and she had them read the passage, and then practice the vocabulary of that passage. And then, they had an additional project, and my brain is blank right now, exactly what that project consisted of. Oh, they had to do word mapping, vocabulary word mapping. And then, they had to select vocabulary words to teach other people. And the third group was practicing fluency, and within the passage with the teacher, and then their assignment and task was to create a character map, in which they taught other people in their class about the character's thoughts, feelings, and actions, and they had sentence frames to help them build that character map. Thank you.
Lesson number three, you can do as many dry ones as you want to, and the video may or may not work. All good lessons. So, you've seen K2, Phonemic Awareness, where we had Ms. Freeman come and talk to us. We've looked at the speaking, writing, listening. Dr. Freeman talked with you about phonemic awareness, and then she also talked with you about guided reading. So, the next component, or the next part, that we're going to look at is going to be in the middle, upper-grade level. And so, I'm going to invite Ms. Darlene Horner to come up. We're not going to play the video for the third time for you. And she's going to be talking with you about what writing looks like, and that extension process in writing.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, how are you? So, at the middle level, most of you are probably parents and have had children in the middle school setting before, you know as a middle school teacher that you, your instruction's going to stand on the shoulders of years of elementary foundational instruction. It is the job of the middle school teacher to push or extend a student who has come to you from elementary, that has had rich literary experiences. It is also our job, students do come to us, without strong or rich literature instruction, it's our job to support and scaffold those students. So, as a middle school teacher, you have the wide range, and you have the skills and strategies to push them forward. In the middle school setting, you also have this emphasis on literary analysis type of writing. This is the type of writing your high school student, or your college child, are doing in their English classes. This is the ground level at the middle school setting. It requires reading and writing. So, how do those two things connect, the reading and writing? On a given day in a middle school setting, you might see kids, let me back up, you have, middle school teachers kind of think of their units in two parts, maybe a major unit and a minor unit. A major unit might be a reading unit, and your minor unit might be a writing unit, for about four weeks. So, in that particular room, you would walk in, if it was a major reading unit, you would see instruction on interpretive reading strategies, and having kids write about what they're reading. So, you have the writing, writing about your reading. Then, after the four to five weeks, you would walk into the room and see a heavy, explicit instruction on writing. How do you write a literary essay that's informative or argumentative, with all of that reading work that you just did in the four to six weeks before then? So, you have your major and your minor units, reading and your writing, constantly. So you have your major and your minor units, reading and your writing, constantly going on. How does this, how do we do this work in middle school? Staying true to those bottom lines of time, choice, and response. Time, when we look at time in the middle school, you think to yourself, you need to have prioritized time for students to actually write. And prioritize time for students to actually read. You also need to think about choice. Choice leads to engagement, and engagement leads to achievement. So how do you have choice in a major unit of writing? You have choice of topic, or choice of something you're going to inform or argue about. You would have choice of texts within your text complexity level. You have a choice of text. So staying true to those bottom lines of time, choice, and response. Response comes in, in the classroom after the instruction has happened, um, at the 10-minute mini lesson. Releasing the kids to actually try this work, this is the bottom line of time, where kids are reading or writing, and teacher is actually conferring. This is when teachers are actually free to teach and be responsive to students. This is the personalization. This is the small grouping. This is the one-on-one based on the student's need. Time, choice, and response is something you stay true to. In a setting of staying true to the bottom lines, you have like an architecture of your actual lessons. So these rooms that your children are in, or rooms that you might walk in, you might walk in at a 10-minute mini lesson where the teacher is explicitly teaching a skill or strategy in 10 minutes. It's tight, it's concise. And then, releasing the kids to actually do this work. That's the, that's kind of the heart and soul of instruction, where teacher is able to go out and actually help this reading and writing where they are and push them to actually outgrow themselves as a reader and a writer. Then you actually have the closing piece, the five minutes. So you have the 10-minute mini, the 30-minute release to actually try this work every single day, and a five-minute closure. This is also another place where you can respond to your students. This is where a teacher shares some of the work that she has just seen. She gives feedback to you, feedback to you, affirming you, affirming your work. Or peers are giving affirmation to their, their student authors or readers in the room. When we look at, um, can we do that next slide? Can we do that next slide? Oh, where is it? Right here? Okay, so when you look at, when you go in these rooms and looking at reading and writing instruction going on all the time, you're always writing about your reading or reading about your writing, always. Some of the tools you might use as a teacher, or tools that you might see in these classrooms, you would see progressions. Students having progressions, kit, uh, teachers having progressions. Progressions being, at each level, if you're working on interpreting theme, you would have like a first grade level and a second grade level and a third grade level, and being able to explicitly be able to push you to the next level. Clear next steps. So progressions are in the hands of teachers, and the progressions are in the hands of students, so they can self-assess. You might also see mentor texts. We learn how to write from looking at published authors' work. So this is where you're writing, or you're reading what you're writing. Or you might also see tools like a read aloud, similar in elementary, but same concept goes in in the middle school. That it's important that you hear someone read a piece of literature, so a teacher is constantly modeling that good work. I guess I, when you think about middle school and, and how we're pushing towards that higher level of reading and writing, the bottom lines of staying close to choice, time, and response are what we stay true to and what was very important to a, a middle school teacher. And that is it. Thank you. Thank you.
And finally, we're gonna look at the high school end, and this is going to be featuring Ms. Hignight. And she is going to be sharing with you kind of what does authentic literacy look like? So you've seen the continuum of where we start and then how we've progressed along, and that is going to be with the discussion of what that looks like in her particular classroom. And so, this is a video of her, and she is going to be showing you an example, live and in person, through the video of what that looks like. And if you'll remember, she is going to be, of course, beginning the set. That set will kind of tell the kids what they're about to do, and then after she gives the set, she's gonna move on into the objective, and then, and then you'll be able to follow along from there.
Today, looking up at the purpose. The purpose today is compare and contrast Hammurabi's Code of Laws and the Arkansas Code of Laws. Sophomores, have y'all looked at the Arkansas Codebook yet? Oh, yeah, so, so the juniors in your class will be a little more familiar with this, um, 'cause I think you guys have started looking at the Code of Laws. I'm not sure that happens a lot during sophomore year, but we're gonna introduce a little bit of it this year. So, compare and contrast Hammurabi's Code of Laws and Arkansas Code of Laws, and then create a visual product that exhibits your group analysis of the readings. Yesterday, you were looking at early River Valley civilizations. Who had Tigris and Euphrates? Yeah, okay, so this is your early River Valley civilization that you were looking at. And we're gonna talk about one of the earliest written Code of Laws, and you have that source on your desk. And it was Hammurabi, a leader from ancient Mesopotamia. And so, first, your first assignment is gonna be to read and annotate. We've done a little bit of annotating. Remember, your goal is to kind of question what you're reading. Look for words that are unfamiliar. You wanna look for patterns, and you wanna look for the purposes of the laws. Hammurabi's Code is fascinating. It's kind of funny and surprising at times. Of course, if you live there, it's probably not quite so funny, but some of the stuff they do, we would think, wow, that's crazy. So kind of look at what were the laws, what were the purposes of the laws, what were they trying to get? Were they trying to get retribution? Were they trying to get restitution? What were they trying to fix with the laws? So let's start with annotating. I'll give you 15 minutes, and then we'll discuss what you've done up to that point. And the timer, so 15 minutes.
Annotation is taking what is written down into the law and putting it into your own way, asking questions, and just making sense of it. Me personally, I like to highlight words that I don't understand, or phrases that, you know, just make sense to me. And then, I write down questions, I look up the meanings of words, or I try to look around and find out the meaning. Understand the material better when it's in your own words and understanding the meanings instead of just reading and trying to understand later on.
I think I like to read it through twice and then like go and highlight the words or phrases I don't really understand. And then, when I get the chance to like look it up or ask someone, so then that helps a lot.
I like listening to other people's opinion because that's what makes me learn more. And I, I like working like that.
I sometimes read, or if I get stuck, I like ask the people in my group or a teacher to help.
Reading is used everywhere. You have to be able to comprehend things that are used inside and outside of class. We are kind of focusing on authentic literacy at the secondary level, and authentic literacy takes place a little differently than it does with lower grades, 'cause we don't have reading classes specific to most high school students. So you will see literacy happening in every single class, whether it's reading a manual, or following directions with technology, or in our case, looking at Hammurabi's Code of Laws and Arkansas Code of Laws. In this classroom today, I had them annotating, which meant they had to try to have a conversation with the text. So as they're reading, they are asking questions on the side, they are thinking about what categories they want for the compare/contrast. Trying to process more deeply the information is the goal. After they read, after they write, then I try to give them time to also process. That takes it past annotation to where they're hearing, to where they're speaking, 'cause we spend a lot of time thinking about our thinking, metacognition at the high school level. Because you think you understand something, but when you go to explain it, if you can't explain it, then you don't really get it. And so, I try to have them talk about it, ask their questions, and process as a group also.
And Dr. Morley.
I think Ms. Hignight summed up a whole lot of this. You've heard us talk about the skills in literacy are listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And she summed up all of that, because she had that in her class. What we did, what we do in, in K-2 is we begin with that phonetic connection. You saw Ms. Poole talking with those kids about the N-sounds, the blended sounds, the sounds that come at the end of, of words. Can you hear them? Can you recognize them? That's where we are in K-2. We talk about learning to read, so we can read to learn. And along the way, we make that shift, so that when we get into the third and fifth grade, now we're asking kids to look at the text, what does it say to us? And they're beginning, we're building vocabulary, we're reading that, and you heard Dr. Freeman talk about that and what that looks like in the classroom. We moved into middle school, and where Ms. Horner gave us a great, great information about the reading and writing connection, because by the time, by that point, you can't separate them. And then, Ms. Hignight talked about how we annotate a test. I, I always called it reading with a pencil. And, you know, and I, all my textbooks have always had all kinds of things written around, written on the sides of them. We provide the training for that. We provided training for all of our K-2 teachers last year and new ones that come on in what program called phonetic connections, and it's phonics-based. We saw a gap there. We felt like our kids needed to go back to basics. They needed to go back to hearing those sounds and being able to connect a sound with letter names and the way we pronounce them. We are now looking, we're now looking a whole lot more deeply at what we're doing at 3-5. We all do guided reading. We all know what that looks like, and now we're saying, how can we get our kids to even higher levels? How can we ensure that our kids are accessing grade-level texts at all times? That's the work we have before us right now. The way we push out a lot of this to our teachers in a district our size, with about 1,600 teachers, it is an amazing thing to try to train all those people. The TOSs that you saw in the back of the room earlier, they are key people. Not only do they write our curriculum, but they help us understand what that curriculum means. They work with our instructional facilitators, who go into our professional learning communities, PLCs, and they teach those directly to the teachers. So it is, it's a trainer of trainer of trainers model. So that's how we push out the, the information, and then, we work with our principals, and that's where we've been all day today, and we teach them how to go in and look for, is this being done? You know, you have to inspect what you expect. And that is, so that's where we are with our work right now. That's, you know, and Dr. Rollins asked us, he said, can you talk about literacy, P-12, in, in 45 minutes? And I said, I don't think so. But, but that's what, that's what we've tried to do tonight, at least give you a taste at each of those levels of what that's about.
I started exonerating, and I.
I'm gonna come to you, Glenn.
And I.
Ms. Morgan. Come on down when you're ready. Thank you, Dr. Poplasky.
Yes, sir.
Did you get mics?
Um, um, he's, he's.
Oh, he's thinking about it. Thank you, Ms.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Rollins, Ms. Newman. It's a hard act to follow. Mine's not near as exciting, I'm afraid. I am responsible for your board packet being so large this month, and I, I did that as a point in time. With your input, we'll do it differently going forward. But Springdale was a district chosen to participate in the pilot for our state in school improvement planning using the Industar Program. And we actually piloted that and provided lots of feedback for the state for two years. And this year, it has gone forward with all schools in Arkansas using that program. I also serve on our statewide advisory committee, and we're able to give feedback to help inform the actual system itself. So what I've done is, instead of giving you a condensed snapshot of the individual school's improvement plan, I've given you the actual body of work that they have put in over the three years that they have worked on this product. It is a living document. It is large. It's different for every school it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be differentiated based upon the needs in that school. There are common threads throughout each school improvement plan. There are common indicators that we work on and choose as a district to support our instructional leadership plan. And so, I'm very proud of that work, and I wanted to establish this year as a baseline and give it to you. And then, tell you in future years, if it's acceptable with you, that we will share that online where you can access with a, a guest password to be able to review them and search them by school. Many of those indicators live year after year. They don't retire. Even though they're fully implemented, as you saw, they lit, they have a, a constant living presence in the work that we do every year. So having said that, that's the beautiful part of the work. And then, I have also included in your packet, I believe, Statement of Assurances, and this is the compliance piece. And based upon what you have seen, as I know you all reviewed all 30, 29 plans deeply, based upon that, you know what is going into the planning and the processes to serve our students, all the individual needs and programs. So this document here is, it's required to be reflected in our board minutes, that you approve it, the Statement of Assurances, and you authorize our superintendent to sign it and submit it along with our exit plans to the state. It is a compliance document, and in my summary of that, it's basically stating that we are in line with funding and spending with federal rules and regs. That we're not supplanting items, and we're meeting all of the requirements of no child left behind, ESEA, testing, how we serve homeless, how we fund at-risk programs, all of that. So this, this was also in your packet. So if, if I could possibly have a motion to approve.
So I think what, is it the seven-page document that's at the very beginning of your section of the agenda? Okay. I certainly think that, based on your expertise in preparing this and Dr. Rollins pending signature on it, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the assurances for programs under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, starting on page 27 of our agenda, and it goes through, I believe, page 34. 33 for each other.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mr. Dotson. Cynthia, did you get that long? Okay, good. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
No, you did it. I'm just, miraculous work.
Just 300 pages. Goodness.
I've asked a very special gentleman to come down and, and be my co-presenter here tonight. I think everyone has met Dr. Savisky, I hope you have. We have partners in every building, we have partners across the community, we have partners, frankly, from across the country. We've been doing this for the last couple of years plus, haven't we? And it is, it has been so good to have Dr. Savisky with us. He helped us lay the foundation for the School of Innovation. He's helped us lay the foundation and give set to the way we opened school this year. Many of you were in those opening school presentations. And let me, let me see now how, how y'all are progressing as a student, and yes, you are gonna get graded yet, so. Draw your version of a staircase, will you? I'm gonna let you fill in the blank now. Just draw your, draw your version, and make sure your landings are broad enough so that you've got room to run. As you've heard me say many times, we're only looking back over 35 years of work in this district. this district. And you think of the hundreds and thousands of teachers who have contributed to this process, and frankly, moms and dads, and certainly board members. We started with that first landing, and what was it? Uh-huh. Coming right along here, we're making progress. What, what descriptors are we going to put on that first landing? That we've built the work of this school system on for this period of time?
Teach them all.
Teach them all. Write that on that first landing. Did you do that? Thank you, Randy, good job. We realized very quickly that the teaching act is one thing, but what's the critical piece?
Kevin?
Learning for all. Learning for all. You'd write that on that second landing. And as people came here from around the world that spawned the growth in this school system, that's led to our growth and development and the construction of more than 20 new schools to accommodate that growth, we built on partnerships with moms and dads. And how did we, how did we characterize that? That whole child piece, that whole education piece, learning together. You'd write that on that third landing? All along, we've been very interested in the progress of our young people, getting youngsters prepared as pre-K kids in kindergarten right through high school. And so graduation rate has been a part of that process. So if you'd write graduation for all on that fourth landing? You've heard me say, you've heard me tell the story to, to y'all individually, to various groups. If you look across the definition of the way the state deals with this in 9 through 12, we're somewhere in that 87% to 88% graduation rate if you look at that cadre of grades. But if you come to the seniors, those kids who enter school this year as seniors, we will graduate virtually 100% of our senior class. That's, that is so very important. It's so very powerful. It's such a testament to the work of every teacher in the school system, graduation for all. If you'd add that to the, to the next ladder. And then we borrowed from the vernacular of the nation, and we then added the next two, career-ready, college-ready. If you'd add those to your landings. And now, we're kind of where we've been pulling and striving for, for so many years, to have a foundation in place, to have the educational tools in place, to have the capacity of a, of a staff in place to personalize teaching and learning. That has been our work. That's what Dr. Savisky has helped us lay the foundation for. The SOI is the, frankly, in my opinion, it's a model for the nation. And it's going to get better and better and better as we have just a little bit of time to live with that model. I wish you'd write personalization of teaching and learning on that next ladder. And that's not the end of the journey by any stretch of the imagination. As a matter of fact, why don't I change that a little bit? Let's, let's hold on personalization. Let's do innovation first. Let's, let's put it in that order. Because innovation and our, the methodologies that we're using to address innovation will lead us to a stronger position now to do personalization on the next, on the next ladder. And there's at least one more that's within our grasp as a vision as we try to stretch and so forth. I may have told you this before, I certainly told the staffs when we came back to school. A dear friend of mine, and I say that, I've known him over the years through work with AASA, et cetera. His name is Joseph Sarasulo. He's former superintendent in the East. He's been the president of the American Association of School Administrators. And he said something like this. Cryptonese, I heard it, read it somewhere, just forgot exactly what it was. You with me? Connecticut, okay. And he said, he talked about customization, which is even more precise perhaps than personalization. Because from his point of view, it's taking those personal preferred learning styles of kids and really honing it to your customization. He said something that's fair. Those districts who are not prepared to innovate, personalize, and customize their delivery of instruction will lose their status or standing to other schools who will. If you think through all of that, that is a powerful foundation to extend the work of this district from. Don, I'm gonna let you build on that, and I thank you for coming and being our partner. And let them, let them hear your perspective on this whole idea of innovation and personalization, and perhaps customization will be the next landing on that stairway to educational excellence.
Thank you, Jim. What we've done in the East, especially Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont, all have state policies about personalized student-centered schools. So we've been asked to change the status quo. We've been asked to have a million conversations, just in Maine, another million in New Hampshire, another million in Vermont, with our public. Because as Jim explained, you have to have your, your programs, you have to look at your practices, and then you have to engage your public into something we call public education. The worst job public educators do, educate the public about what we do with their children. We just don't share that enough. Going to a customized approach, and I'm going to use a play on words about all means all, that one size does not fit all. What we did in 1892 is create high schools. We created high schools because we needed foremen to manage people on the assembly line. And the requirement was four English, two math, two science, and two social studies. That's not significantly different 127 years later. Yet, if you look at the Super Bowl, every ad was about customizing a product for a consumer. Our conveyor belt of grade levels really needs to be scrutinized. We cannot just keep moving a ninth-grade kid, a nine-year-old, to a 10-year-old, to an 11-year-old, and just move them through the grade levels. When Maine adopted a proficiency-based diploma, we said, no more averaging. Every standard has to be met. And when you and I went to school, this is how we passed. We got a 90, a 90, a 90, and a 10. 270 plus 10 is 280, divided by 4 is 70. Good enough! And we went on to the next grade level. And then that 10 started haunting us. Because I didn't ever learn that concept. And the next grade level built on that concept, and the next one built on that one. And learning has progressions. And if you go through the grade levels without a level of proficiency, it catches up to you. It catches up to you in your sophomore year when you figure out mathematically you cannot graduate. And you say, see ya, folks. I'm gone. So this one-size-fits-all doesn't work. If, if we have, learning happens 24/7. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church, we're learning constantly. If we take our curriculum from the TOSs and post it and make it transparent for everyone, what happened in my district, the biggest problem we had were kids out of grade level. I had to ask the Department of, this interesting story, I had to ask the Department of Education as a superintendent for a waiver because my 7th and 8th graders were taking high school courses. And we want to give them credit for it. But the statute said you can't get credit for graduation unless you're enrolled in a high school. They weren't enrolled in a high school. So it was the bureaucracy that get in the way. So I wrote a waiver. And one year later, I was deputy commissioner. And it came across my desk, approved! And then that started a precedent. And then other superintendents said, well, if Don can get away with it, why can't we? And then all of a sudden, we had kids finishing high school at the end of their sophomore year. So we had to adopt dual credit. We had to have our high school teachers become adjuncts in local colleges. And I'm not talking about university, public universities, we're talking about some privates, some Kobe Bates and Bodens. And the kids walked down the hallway in high school and went to college and graduated with 20 to 24 credits. That's why this concept of SOI, or any school system, and it doesn't have to be the School of Innovation, it can be any school, doing dual credit and graduating with a transcript. This is something interesting that I learned. Colleges accept other colleges' transcripts. The private and selects don't necessarily agree or, or give credit for AP. But they will give credit for other college experiences. So that challenged our interpretation of what we wanted our advanced kids to be doing. And they started enrolling in college in their junior and senior year, stayed in high school with their friends. And that became pre-K 20, under the superintendent's responsibility. And if I could get a license to be a community college, I would. It would be pre-K, not 12, but 14 as a minimum, and kids would just keep going. I think graduation has been oversold. It sounds like a dead end. It sounds like you're done. Or you're never done. I have three children. Two with pedigrees from private colleges, and one who barely made it out of high school. He taught me the importance of continuous learning. Studied Russian history to learn something about our Polish background. He went to Ellis Island. He found the manifest of his ship that my grandparents arrived in. He made contact with Vilna Polin. He found the original spelling of my last name. Looks nothing like the English version. And he failed the course. Superintendent, son. Son said, Dad, chill out. I took the course to learn something. I never took it for a grade. If I could have every child graduate with a curiosity to continue learning all his life, and he's still doing it. He's 35 years old, and he's still. It's a different kind of experience now. It isn't a pedigree and you think you're done. It's continuous learning, every month, every month, there's a module on the internet. And he's into technology. And it never ends. So I offer that to you as what the future looks like. I offer that to you to take a look at the status quo. And as Jim had mentioned, rein the innovation. I have to change the way I teach. I have to change the way I deliver education so that I can get to student agency and customization. Students are motivated by the following research: purpose, mastery, and autonomy. If you give them purpose, give them that responsibility to make a decision. Get out of the way because they're going to produce something beyond your expectations. And we found it in every class structure that we tried this with. Now, research is from Daniel Pink. Jim?
Okay. Just those last three runs, we've got some important steps to take together. And it's, it's important that we're learners together. What, what did we say about the best teachers? The best teachers are who? Those who learn right along with their kids. So we kind of started a new approach to our meeting tonight with the idea that we'll all be learners together. We know that we've got a lot to learn, and that's the beauty of it. That's the excitement of it. But as we go walk down these, or up these stairways, if you will, to these next landings, then it's really important that we're thinking together, planning together, representing our community together. So, okay. Y'all, y'all all right with our set for tonight's meeting, which will lead us to our next meeting and so on and so forth? But innovation, personalization, customization, I think, is really important to our school district at this juncture in our history. I want to talk just a little bit about facility improvements, and so I'm going to move on to that third item on my list. Again, it will be repetitive, but I need you to know where we are. The, you've seen us do work at Emdale. I hope you like what we've done there. Kathy, do you like what we've done there? I know you do. We've talked about the bunch. You've seen the work that we've done at Westwood, and that list goes on and on. And we want to continue to bring our older schools forward. We're working very closely to take, take a planning look at Tyson Elementary School, beautiful school, great history, phenomenal staff, great parents as partners. But it's an older school, and as y'all remind me from time to time, it'd be great for us to come back and touch our older schools. So we, we've got our architects working on Tyson Elementary today, so we'll have things to talk about in upcoming meetings. And hopefully, by the time we get to our November work session, we've got some things that we can really show you regarding that school. Same applies to Walker Elementary School. Those two specifically are in our focus today. Some things have happened over the, over the last few months that have caused me to come back and think again about one of our junior highs. Perhaps, I love Southwest Junior High School. That was, that's been a phenomenal team, great place over the years, but it needs some attention as well. So I'm wanting to bring our focus to Southwest. And if you look at our, our newer junior highs, certainly we've done significant work at Central Junior High. It's time for us, in my opinion, and I'm satisfied, yours as well, to take a, take a look at Southwest. Okay. So Tyson Elementary, Walker Elementary, Southwest Junior High, we're all in the, involved in a planning phase there. Had a great meeting today. I know the board was at Lee Elementary. I had an opportunity to go by and visit prior to y'all getting there today, and I know you had a great session out there. I went on from there to the School of Innovation, and the Springdale Chamber of Commerce held its board meeting at the SOI today. And it was important that I try to be there and support that process as well. The partnerships with our business community are really important. And as you know, the, the chamber and the business leaders of the community have had a strong voice in bringing our School of Innovation forward. So I was out there doing that, and you can't, you know, we're just getting in the door. And so I realize this is ambitious. But it's important because we, we've worked, I think, as a team and done some really good things with great architects and, and construction managers, et cetera. And those guys delivered the building just so they'd talk to you. You know, the South Wing will be completed in January. So sometime after January, we'll be looking at the dedication of the Don Tyson School of Innovation as well. It's important that we look down the road, have a good game plan in terms of where we go from here. We've got the instructional model, we've got the plans laid out, we've got a progressive plan to get to 1,000 students there. But what will that school look like five years from now, six years from now, seven? So we have to be thinking, planning now. And as you know, we talk about a Phase 2 of that school to bring on space for another thousand kids. So how to do that? And obviously, the, the major struggle about something when you add another 200,000 square feet of floor space plus is how would you finance it? And Kelly's done some great work that in the days and months ahead, we'll show you in terms of how we think we might be able to get at the expansion of that school as well. So all of those are really, really important. But Randy, those, those are the schools that are in our, in our vision right now for improvement projects. You okay with, with that? Any questions about any of that? The next item is the land bake activation. Randy and I talked quite a bit about that. We, the last few months, we've come back to it. You know, we've virtually exhausted our building sites on the east side. We're still in a strong position on the west, which is great. But again, you have to plan and budget, and you need to build schools where your, where the houses already exist or houses are projected to exist. So we'll, we'll be working very closely with Jared and, and the staff and on the school facility side to try to look at some acquisition of property on the east. We need, in my view, two or three sites there so that we've got options as, as we go forward. We wouldn't have been in a position to make the adjustments that we've made if we, if we, if this board hadn't have done, taken that kind of action a decade ago. we, if this board hadn't have taken that kind of action a decade ago. But you did, and we've worked through it in a systemic way, and I think it's worked pretty good. I know that item five, just progressive efforts to accomplish the district's big audacious goals. You know, we've hired an academic coach. She's done great work already, getting out there, laying the foundation, involving moms and dads, so they can look at scholarship preparedness and how the family needs to work and support these kids in that process. So we'll be looking forward to Ms. Campbell's presentation at the October meeting. In addition to that, you know, we've made adjustments in salary schedules, stipends, et cetera, to bring support to the district's counselors. We have 50-plus counselors in the district, and it's very important that that effort continues to be coordinated as well. So we'll give you more information on that as we go forward. I think our team has opened school really well. I'm so extremely appreciative and proud to see these teachers stand in front of you tonight. Everybody knows what a TOSA is, I assume. Teacher on Special Assignment. How many times have I said to you, some of the finest leaders in our schools are our classroom teachers? And classroom teachers that are bringing forward their love for curriculum writing, et cetera, sets the stage for personalization, innovation, all those kinds of things. So it was great to recognize that group. And at the heart of it all, Jeff, is getting kids literate in terms of their ability to process and read and write and communicate and so forth. And so that was our focus this evening, and we'll come back to other areas of special emphasis in the future. Any questions, board, or me, about anything? Randy, you want to stretch, or you want to go on? What's your preference?
I'm good, but I'll defer to my board.
Can I just take five? Let's take five.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, board. When we come back, Dr. Cleveland will talk with us about personnel and facilities.
Okay, that's all you.
All right, thanks. I know you, good evening. I know you have some information in your board packet where you've already looked at the enrollment, but I'd like to just talk to you a little bit through it. The 21-260 that you see for FY 2016, that was a three-quarter average this last school year. So it's a good number to review. That's the number we get paid for in regard to the state on student foundation funding. But as of September 15th, we had 21,00529. Our highest level was 21,595, but we had some students who just really didn't show up. We're still in our rolls, so we had to back them off after 10 days. So right now that we're at 21,529, which is, we're up 269. So that's, that's a good number. It's a good number. We literally prepared for anywhere between 150 to 200, so we had to make some adjustments there at the end. There's no particular grade where kids showed up, because they're Dr. Rollins. They're just all over the map, kindergarten through 12th grade. Kindergarten's a little bit lower than we anticipated. It's still in the 1,600 range, but.
We got our staff all lined out now? Everything's?
Our staff, our staff's lined out. We haven't hired anyone in several days.
Hours, it's been hours.
Several days, but that's subject to change. I've just had a very smart, young principal here let me know that she had seven enroll a day. And so she's over, over in.
One or two in third grade.
Well, in her pod of third grade, in her sister schools, they're all at capacity or over as well. So we've, we've got a little work to do tomorrow on what we're going to do. But it was, it was good to learn that today, but she's at Tyson, so anyway. We're pleased with our enrollment and we're encouraged and we're looking forward to maybe some additional growth in the future. In regard to personnel, as Mr. Hayes lets me know, up 250 probably isn't, that's not 37 FTEs, but we're working every day to make sure we've opened two new schools. And I think, looking at history when we opened Lakeside and some other schools, 37 is a good number, Dr. Rollins, as far as, not too many. We actually added 51.29 new positions, but we did absorb 14 across the district. So that leaves us in net of 37.29. I'm very pleased with that. In classified, the new positions, we absorbed 10 positions across the district, but added 29 in different buildings. You know, you open two new buildings, you need custodians, you need cafeteria folks, you, you just need secretaries, registrars and the like. So we, we added 20 new positions. So total, we have 999 classified employees and 109 bus drivers, giving us 1,108 classified positions for a total of 2763 overall employees, 2,763 overall employees. And right behind your personnel comparison update, you have a listing of all of the staff members. You have the administration, you have the new certified positions, and then overall new certified personnel and classified personnel. So I would like to enter that into the record as well, with your permission. If you don't have any questions about that, I'll talk to you about another hat I get to wear that I really, really enjoy. Is that okay?
What if, never mind, never mind, I just found my answer.
Okay, is it the yellow?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, the other hat that I get to wear has to do with support services, and I absolutely love working with our support services. Classified personnel we have, especially in maintenance, are, are, they're phenomenal. Our custodians are great. Our bus drivers work absolutely tremendously. They, they work themselves to death. We have 116 bus drivers. I'm going to tell you, we're, we're short. We're short about 10 drivers. Even though we collapsed eight bus routes, we still are short 10 drivers. And you say, well, how do you get the buses run every day? Well, we pull from our district personnel who have CDLs. That's maintenance and custodian and others that, that have CDLs to try to get that done. We do a really good job, we do a really good job of recruiting. But right now with our climate in Northwest Arkansas, our employment percentage, which is really, really low, people really don't need the jobs that we have right now. In fact, some other districts around us are doing some interesting things in regard to trying to recruit. I think you probably read the newspaper about what Bentonville's doing. I talked to Mr. Samples about it at length. They're providing a perfect attendance bonus and some other things. So anyway, we, we don't know right now. We're just in investigative, investigation phase of recruiting, trying to see what we can do to continue to recruit good drivers. Part of our issue is getting them through the background checks in the system. So I've talked to Dr. Rollins about this and he's approved. But we're going to purchase our own fingerprint scanners. And one of the major issues in our cafeteria is trying to get personnel onboarded quickly. Right now, there's a two or three week wait. We have to send them to the co-op to get their fingerprints done. And so we're trying to do some things on our own. We purchased them through these fingerprint scanners through the Department of Education. They're between 1,600 and 1,800 dollars a piece. And we think we can get five and scatter them throughout the district to try to make sure that we can onboard people quicker. When you think about onboarding, all of you have been in business, you know how it is to onboard people. Just one is not easy. But when we onboard 250 to 300 people per year, and it goes on and on and on, sending them to the co-op doesn't make a lot of sense. Plus, you're having to pay 40 dollars each time to do that. So if we have our own, we can onboard them quicker, hopefully get, get a response from the state in a more timely fashion and get them to work quicker. We, we can't afford to have this lag time. And so we're working on that, Dr. Rollins, to try to reduce that lag time.
What is that process?
Well, okay, when you first, let's say we're going to onboard someone. Let's say it's a classified bus driver. They come, they do their application. We, let's say we want to hire them. They have to get their fingerprints taken and approved. They do a criminal background check. They also have to go through the child maltreatment registry to make sure everything's clear and they're not in trouble in any way or have had a, a child endangerment issue in the past. And that takes, it's the FBI check, Kelly, I guess, takes a while. State police is pretty quick, once you can get it in.
So we send those reports off, or you have to send them to the state and they send them?
We send them to the state. The state clears them through the Arkansas State Police, but we also send it to the FBI, and they, they clear that as well. It takes a little while. As soon as we get the green light that the state police says that, that it looks okay, then we can put them to work. But if something comes back on the FBI check, they're disqualified.
So we're paying 40 dollars to the co-op for them to do the fingerprints? Or is 40 dollars for all of what you just talked about?
That's, that's paid by the individual prospective employee.
Oh, okay.
We don't pay the 40 dollars.
Okay.
Drug scanning? No, no. If they're a bus driver, they're subject to drug testing. If they drive any school vehicle, they're subject to, to random drug testing, and we do that. But not, not for teachers and, and secretarial staff and things like that, cafeteria staff. Only if they drive a, a school vehicle. Those are good questions. Anything else in that regard? Okay. Okay, so in transportation, we're a little short, but we are working on it. One of the best recruiting methods we found are the buses on the side of the road with the big signs. We can put them on, on the internet, we can put it in the newspaper, people see the buses. And the other districts are doing it too, Fayetteville, Rogers, Bentonville.
There's lots of buses out.
Mm-hmm, we're competing. And we're in an area where, where folks with CDLs are in high demand. We have many truck driving companies that they hire our folks, and they pay them really well. So we are in the middle there, this limbo land of trying to, to hire people who have the CDL. But typically, they're either retired and trying to supplement their income, or they need insurance or, or something like that. So, but the staff we have, they're great. It's really difficult to do. My son drove all last year, drove a route, and he said, Dad, I'm telling you, hardest thing I've ever done. And I said, well, you haven't taught yet, son, but driving the bus is, I've done that too, and it's, it's not easy. So there's a whole lot to it. In our transportation department, Dana Samples, Tim and Tracy, Stephen, the whole, the whole bunch over there, they're very professional, they're very kind, very good. They, I have a, a bus radio that I listen to in the mornings and the af, and in the afternoons to listen to the traffic. They all work as a team. I would encourage you sometime, if you ever would like to, come to my office or get a radio and listen to the bus traffic. It is amazing. I know you guys that who, who have a lot of that and certainly do with the, the trucks. It's amazing, this team. And so I'm bragging on them, but I think it's just because I'm so impressed with the work they do. In food service, right now, something that's important for you to know, in the past, we've, in fact, last year, we've gone over 70 percent free reduced lunch. That means that we have about a thousand dollars per child that we get from the state in NSLA funds or NSL funds, as they call it today. That, that's extra money that we use in order to help prop up needy students in their educational process. Right now, we're a little short of that. We have about 2,015 students that are still eating on last year's federal form, which allows them to eat. That date, that cutoff date for them to use last year's form is September the 26th. And so there's a gap between September 26th and October 1st, when we find out what our percentage is and we have to submit that, that number to the state. It has nothing to do with food service, but it's an indicator of poverty in your district. And so that's why the state uses that number. So we're working on that. Principals are working very diligently to try to bring those applications in. The main reason that we want to do that is we don't want any child to miss a meal, right? And you say, okay, well, what happens if that, that runs out? Well, they get an alternative meal. They have to, you know, that process that's in your policy, you've dealt with that in the past. So we're working hard. Mr. Hayes sends out good emails every so often to, to give the staff an update of where we are and to make sure that those students and those parents send in their free reduced lunch forms. So we have an adequate count and a proper count. So that's where we are.
How many schools are serving breakfast today?
The breakfast in the classroom, or every school serves breakfast? Dr. Rollins, do you have an accurate number for breakfast in the classroom?
I need to review it. I'm thinking eight to 10.
Okay, it's, it's working well. Have you been to a classroom that, that does breakfast in the classroom? They come in generally at elementary, it's about 7:45, and they go to their classroom and they eat breakfast together with the teachers. I haven't seen it this year, but I've been involved with in the past in a former district. My understanding is that it's a, it's a quality opportunity for kids to bond, teachers to bond. There are some rough edges too with it, in that you've got trash. You have, is it instruction time or is it duty? You have that question every once in a while that pops up. But overall, you know, barring the cleaning out the drains and things like that and the extra trash, in the end, we're serving the kids. You know, I'm talking to you about adult issues. When you focus on what's right for kids, those decisions become really clear, don't they? And so that's our, our focus, is to try to make sure that each one of them have a great opportunity to eat breakfast. And I appreciate your question.
My greatest goal to achieve is to deliver work for all of the.
That's great. That's a, that's a good report. Well, I have three sons. All of them look forward to any opportunity at a meal.
There you go.
They get that from their father, I guess. Okay, I've talked to you about recruiting a little bit. Maintenance and construction. Right now, we have, we're working with the fire inspectors and our insurance company overall to make sure that we create a new system of fire inspection. They call it hot work permits. Have y'all heard of that before? If there's any ki, if there's any kind of work that has to do with soldering or cutting or anything to do with welding, then we have to make sure that we have a, a fire suppression opportunity there. You know, if you're on top of a roof and, and you cut into an air conditioner compressor or whatever, and you're all by yourself and you get some sparks loose, you, you can have a real problem, especially on a building, right? So the insurance company, as you all would assume, would not want us to do that without a proper process. So we're working through that process right now to, to reduce our exposure in regard to fire. So we're, we have this process, and Jeremy Quat is doing a great job bringing that about along with Dave Mountain. And we're going to make sure that we have the appropriate fire suppression system and the blankets, the, what they call heat shield blankets. Anywhere that we do any, anything like that, there will always be two people to ensure the safety of the structure, the safety of anybody who's in the building. So that, it's kind of interesting. Dr. Rollins talked to you about Elmdale, and I think you mentioned NAP, I'm not sure. But Elmdale is beautiful and great, and we're wrapping it up. There are some savings that's going to come back to the district. Dr. Rollins doesn't even know this yet, I haven't had a chance to tell him today. But it looks like we could get anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 dollars in savings come back to the district. So that, that's a really good thing, we think, ball on the shelf for, for that work. Girl softball at Harbor, we are putting in a, an in-ground sprinkler system over there. That work started on Wednesday. It should be completed by the end of this month or the end of this week or next. They also fixed a few leaks on the baseball field, so that's happening. At Linda Childers NAP, you've all been there, it's a beautiful facility. We're, we're buttoning up, making sure all the desks are there and the panels, what they call a modesty panel for the teachers' desks, making sure those are in. There are just a few issues. We don't have the goals in, in the gym yet, but we've ordered those and we're trying to get those. There was a little bit of confusion. If the district buys those, if they're in the bid, well, we're supposed to buy them. And between Dr. Compton and me, and I'll take that, I can't, I can't blame Dr. Compton for it. I'd like to, but I had to order the goals. So we, we've got that done, but it is coming around. We've also fenced, I don't know if Dr. Rollins has seen it, fenced around the, our big, what do you call that? I call it a pit. It's the retainage pond, so we fenced around that to make sure children.
Maybe an auditorium.
What is it? Okay. It may be a soccer field, I don't know. We're, we're trying to do all kinds of fun stuff with it, but we've fenced around that and we're, we're working to fence along the west side to keep kids safe away from those apartments and down that hill. So it's very important that we ensure safety. Ms. Covington's also working, improving an opportunity for PTA to, to build the appropriate playground systems out there. So she's, she's got that started. Wanted to let you know. At SOI, how many, I just love that building. It's the most amazing school facility I've been in, barring some colleges. Just amazing. So we're, we're working on that. We've got some issues, you know? Anytime that you are in a building that you're still constructing, it's going to create some challenges. But the team that's over there, they're working through those challenges in a, in a great, in a great way. We've got some HVAC issues. They put in some Dykin units. They're good units, but the way the air conditioner motor ramped up, ramped up really quickly, and so it created stress on some of the components. That's what I'm being told now by the professionals, the engineers. And it would, it cracked some of the internal components and created some leakage, freon and whatnot. And so they've had to reprogram those components, those engines, those motors. That way, they start up slower and ramp up faster to, to reduce the amount of stress on those engines, on those motors. We think that it's going to work, but the jury's still out. At the end of the day, Dr. Rollins has said that we're not going to take secondhand units. And if it means those units come off in the winter over the break and they put in brand new units, that's what we're going to do, because we're, we don't expect to have secondhand or chopped up units on a brand new, however many million dollar building that is. And so we're working on that, and we know it's the people's money. We want to make sure that we're very diligent in how that money is spent. At SHS, Dr. Rollins has talked to you all about athletic facilities and what that may look like over the next few years. So the first step in that process is to go in front of the planning commission and request approval for what a track, soccer and tennis court may look like and what a baseball and softball field might look like over there. And so that first step's been taking, taken, whether we ever do the, the fields or not. The process has started, and the commission voted for it seven to zero to, to approve that, should the board and Dr. Rollins choose to, to move forward with that project. So that step's been taken. At Harbor, have all of you seen the new turf at Harbor? That was done as a project in partnership with Everett Chevrolet, and we're, we're pleased to have that done. And they'll pay every penny of that cost over time. They also put the new, the Super S in over at Springo High, which looks great, and we're very thankful for that. So at both facilities, we have an upgrade, Dr. Rollins, that I think is spectacular. We've got nothing but compliments. In the construction process of changing the turf out, there was some damage to the field house. They have a tractor and a sky lift and some other things, and they bumped the field house. And we've got some metal to fix, and they're going to fix it, and it's going to be at, at their cost. It's probably around 20,000 dollars, but we're sure that it's not going to take place while kids are there, or will it impact any of our games or activities out there? So if you see something happening at the field house where they're taking metal off, putting it back on, it's because they damaged it.
What was the carpet cost?
Half a million dollars. If you were to. Yes, the, the carpet itself is extremely expensive. I know Clarksville and some other school districts around have put turf in, and it cost them one more than, than Everett is supplying for us there. And at some point, I believe, the turf at Springo High is five years old, four years old, something like that?
Time flies, I hope it's not that far along.
Okay, I, I think it may be. And so Springo High will be on the docket to have that opportunity at some point. The way we use our turf here, if it were grass, it'd be, it'd be gone from the field in the first week. We, we use our facilities, and I, I want to thank you all. I want to thank you for your investment. That investment's paying off, paying dividends in, in the lack of the maintenance that we have to do. There's still some maintenance, but not like it is every day. Our mechanical lab, as we affectionately call it, the Stohaffius Building over at Harbor, it's been staked today. The building's been ordered, Dr. Rollins approved that a couple of weeks ago. And so we should start breaking ground on that pretty quickly. Dr. Rollins has to go over and, and check out the stakes, make sure where the building is, is where he wants it to go. But that, that should happen this week, so we should be in good shape. Two brags on the maintenance department, and this is really important. As I've learned the process, as I've started over there talking to Jeremy and Dave Mountain and learning the whole team, I bring them in every Friday, we meet at nine o'clock, and typically, those meetings last till noon and sometimes after. We report out, every supervisor reports out, and it, it's brought that entire team together. We have Mary Miller, Kathy Laundre, Jeremy, Dave Mountain. We bring in Brian Burkett sometimes and Alan Athie sometimes, and then Dana Samples. And so they're able to talk about what's going on in each of their departments and helps them be more efficient. It's amazing how, like Mary Miller said, well, I can get that translated. And anyway, they're working together and it's good. But it helps me understand what all's going on, and I'm able to come. But it helps me understand what all's going on and I'm able to come report to Dr. Rollins on Monday. So it makes us where information doesn't get lost. But two big pieces that came out of this last Friday's meeting is that we are going paperless in our maintenance department. That will save us quite a bit of money, quite a bit of time, and it's very efficient. We are the third district in the country to go paperless in school duty. It's a big deal. You know, we've got, recognized at the School of Innovation University back in the spring for being in the top five, not top 5%, top five districts in the country in regard to our PMs and our work order system. So the work is getting done. Sometimes it doesn't get done as quickly as some would like, but there's a priority system and it works really well. And as you can see, our district, as you drive around, the buildings look really nice. When you walk in, they're clean, they smell good, the kids are safe. We're working on those issues. There are things that our group does that you can't see. Most of those are on the roof. Most of those are behind the scenes and the electrical components and the HVAC units. And if you can't see them and they're not a problem, then you know the work's getting done. I know this summer when my air conditioner went out at the house, I could hear it run. The house looked fine, but I was hot. Okay, so I knew there was a problem. If you're not experiencing those things in those buildings, you know things are going well. Okay? So I need to brag on them, going paperless is a big deal. And the final thing I want to talk to you about is we lucked into a grant with UCA. There's a guy named Ed Ellis who does UCA's, University of Central Arkansas. He does their Energy Star rating. Typically, when you Energy Star rate a building, it costs a significant amount of money. They're doing our entire district for us for this much. We've paid before, I think it was Harbor and another school to be done, and it cost us about $10,000. They're doing our entire district, electrical, water, and gas. So we'll be able to, there's some data input. I mean, it's going to take some time. But overall, we're going to get to see a trend line of how much energy we use, when we use it, when our peak times. And if a bill goes awry, we'll see a spike and we'll know either there's a leak, we have an issue. So doing this is a big deal. Melissa Campbell, who was Gary Compton's secretary, who basically is my go-between between everything that's going on in the building and support services now, she's doing that data input and she volunteered to do that. So what a great personnel we have over there in Melissa Campbell. And it's going to be a great thing for us over time. And I'll report to you as things come about and we'll look at our energy usage. And I just wanted to let you know, we've got a great team over there. Every, you know, from Dana Samples to Jeremy Quaid, to Carol Godfrey, the entire team, they're really, really phenomenal. And I know you don't hear their name enough and you don't really know what they do until there's a problem. And that's why they're really good, because you don't really know a lot about the problems. Anyway, that's my report, Dr. Rollins. I'm sorry I took so much time, but it was important tonight.
Can you tell us a little bit about the mumps and how they're related?
Yes, ma'am, I can. I can give you an update on the mumps. Right now, as of last week and early on this week, we've worked real closely with the Department of Health. And as you know, it's been on the news, been in the newspaper, it's been all over social media. Originally, I was, through HIPAA and other reasons, I couldn't put out a whole lot of information other than the number of kids we had that had the mumps. This is a regional issue. It's a regional health issue. I felt early on that people thought it was a Springdale School District problem. You know what? Ms. McFetridge, it's not. It's a regional health issue that impacted our district and now it's impacting others. And to kind of get the blame for that is a little off-putting to be real nice about it. But our people have come through with flying colors. Right now, we have 74 students who are exempt, either by religious, philosophical, or medical exemptions, that their parents have chosen. Okay, 74 overall students out of 23,000 kids. You have MMR-1, that's the first shot you get. You have MMR-2, which is the second shot you get. And typically, those come early on, three, four years old for the first one, and then, what is it? A few months or whatever, maybe a year after. The thought from the Department of Health was that since some of our pre-K kids have only had the one immunization, that they'll come in and do a second immunization. But I'm not sure where they are on that right now. They're asking parents to do that, not requiring parents to do that. Of the 74 students that we have that have immunizations or exemptions, they're not all in a school that has a mumps case. Okay? So right now, Kendra may have to help me with the total number. Do you know how many students we have?
Between 30 and 40 are housed with mumps.
Of the 74? Of the 74.
Okay, how many of the 74 have the mumps?
Well, as of right now, Danny, I don't believe any of them do.
Okay.
I know what your next question is.
If none of the kids that weren't-
Of all the immunized-
Then the ones who are in the district that have the mumps, what happened?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding. And right now, we only have eight confirmed. That's a laboratory test confirmation. We have many that are, many more than that, who have symptoms of the mumps. But I can tell you this, originally, we were told that we had two staff members that had symptoms of the mumps. They went to the doctor, had the test, didn't have the mumps. So anytime they call a case a case, it's suspected. And to me, it's either confirmed or it's suspected. Until it's-
What I'm wondering is, the kids that aren't getting back to them, that's not the problem?
It doesn't appear that they're in danger right now.
No. They're not getting the mumps and bringing them to school.
That has not happened, so you're correct.
Of course, I know that it's happening. But back in the day, if somebody had three kids and one daughter, like have all her to school so that all get the mumps so that momma don't have to care?
That happened with my brother and me with chickenpox.
Might be just one more thing just now.
Y'all are laughing, that happened to you too, right? My parents said, "Go play." So it remains a serious issue for the region. But the outbreak, as they call it, an outbreak, it could last as long as six months, Ms. McFetridge. In fact, in Iowa, where this came from, the State Department put this out, or the Department of Health put this out, it came from Iowa. Someone came down here to visit, whether it's the university or whatever, and exposed someone who had immune deficiency. And so they caught the mumps. And so when they did, they exposed their family, exposed their church, and it just kind of spread that way. And so that's where we are.
So around here, it would be friendly?
All the way to Iowa, yes. The Health Department's been a really good partner with us. The original information we had was that anybody with an exemption had to be out of school for 26 days. We ran a report. That was like 29 pages, okay, worth of kids. And we said, "Wait a minute. Define exemption for us. Tell us exactly what we need to say. And are you sure it's a district issue?" Because, you know, Springdale School District has 31 schools and 23,000 kids. Whereas where I started at Magazine, they have less than 1,000 kids. That's a big difference in district, okay? So they defined it over a couple of days and said, "No, it's going to be the school, the location, not the district." So- Can I use Tyson for an example? Okay. So let's say that this didn't happen, but let's say Tyson was our first, okay? If a child with one case in Tyson, that classroom where that one child was, let's say it was first grade, then if there was a child with an exemption in that first grade, that child had to go home for 26 days. If there were two cases in the building, then all students with exemptions in the building had to go home for 26 days. Let's say day one starts and we get all the way to 25, and another child in the building is suspected or confirmed to have the mumps on day 25, that day, that 26-day stance starts again. So students could be out over a long period of time. So far, it appears, in discussing with Dr. Smith, who's the, Nate Smith, who's the director of the Department of Health, and Dr. Hauslam, who's the epidemiologist there, we've all become pretty good friends, as much as we communicate now. He talked about herd immunity when I was called, was it last Monday, I guess, to go to Little Rock to testify at the Public Health Meeting. He talked about herd immunity. He said, "Once you get to about 88% of the herd being immune, then it will kill off. It will slow down." Well, in our school district, somebody do the math for me. Who's the math wizard? Do the math. 23,000 kids, and eight, and eight have the mumps. What percentage is that? So in our mind, it should be short-lived in our district. It may not be short-lived in our region, in Northwest Arkansas. Because we can't, the Department of Health can't enforce, can't make adults get their shots. Can't make them. So the question came up from Mike, Representative Mike and Neil and others. Are you all, and this, I might be going too far into this, Ms. McFetridge, so you just let me know when I need to go sit down. What are you doing about the businesses? Have you talked to the businesses? Who all has the mumps in the businesses? Do you know? If it's a grocery store, do you make them go home? If it's a daycare, do you make them go home? What are you doing with the adults? Because until you do something about the adults, the kids can be in jeopardy. Our focus is understood. Anyway, good questions, good debate, took a couple hours. And right now, it's become a little bit more quiet. So hopefully, hopefully, we're past the tipping point of getting worse. All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. Sorry I took so much time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kendra. Kendra, Kendra, that one. Kendra, why?
Good evening. I've got three items on your agenda. The first one is revisions to the policy for out-of-district transfers. And these are the school choice transfers. So these are the ones that parents fill out the application in the spring. They are not the transfers, board-to-board transfers that you see on your monthly agenda. The changes that were made to the policy were changes that came through legislation in 2015. Just to highlight a few of what those are, because I know when you look at it and see a bunch of strike-throughs and underlines, it may just kind of gobble up for you. The timelines changed in that applications are due May 1st instead of June 1st. Decisions have to be made by July 1st instead of August 1st. The law, the changes to the law direct you as a board to adopt a resolution for accepting applications, accepting or rejecting applications. I'll also ask you today to adopt the resolution that's enclosed in your packet. And it just states that, number one, you're going to follow the law and the restrictions that the law lays out for you. And number two, it establishes capacity requirements. And one change that happened in 2015 is that it allowed a board to reject, or a district to reject an application based on being at capacity. They define capacity of at least 90% in a program, building. In other words, they're not going to force you to hire staff to accommodate school choice transfers. Now, we certainly can. It's not something that you are required to enforce, but it puts that in place so that if we, as a district, get in a position where we need to, you know, take a step back from accepting everybody who wants to come here, we've got that criteria in place. It also, the changes to the law require you to deny any applications of students that are coming from districts with enforceable DSEG orders. So I know being a part of Northwest Arkansas, that hasn't been an issue to date. But with our virtual option with School of Innovation, it could very well become an issue this next cycle of school choice transfers, when we get students from districts that still claim to have, claim or have a valid enforceable desegregation order. So we need changes to the policy in place for that as well. And the last change is a definition for siblings. That was actually defined in the law, so it was real easy to put that in there, exactly what siblings are. Because siblings do get a preference. If a student applies for school choice and already has a sibling attending the district underschool choice, they are to get a preference in front of other applications. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I would ask that you would adopt the changes to the policy and adopt the resolution. Yes, sir.
The desegregation with SOI, can you explain that?
Sure. So the law not requi, or the law directs districts to reject an application of a student who is coming from a district with an enforceable desegregation order. So in the traditional school choice context, you're looking at your neighboring districts, because those are where your students are coming from. Which, when you're in this area, there are not any districts that have these enforceable desegregation orders. Where it could come into play is with students who want to school choice into Springdale School District to attend the School of Innovation virtually, which will become an option this next school choice cycle.
Little Rock wants to do a virtual-
Yes, anywhere, you know, Little Rock, El Dorado actually recently went to court over their desegregation order. So those students would not be allowed to attend through school choice because of the desegregation order. So we need that in place so that if and when we get those students from districts that have those, and it's just a handful that still have those, but we would not be allowed under the law to accept them. Any other questions?
If you accept changing policies and-
Adopt the resolution.
Now, we're doing, how many resolutions here? Just one?
There's just one resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dotson, a second by Mr. Williams. Is there any further discussion? Any other questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Okay, the second item is the transfers this month, the board-to-board transfers. You'll see that there are 11 on the list. Nine of those want to come into the district and two want to go out. The two that are leaving are students who have never attended Springdale School District and are desiring to finish their senior year in their district where they have been through their educational careers. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would ask that you approve those transfers.
I move to approve the transfers, Representative.
We have a motion by Mrs. McFetridge, a second by Mr. Dotson. Any further discussion?
Two that left. They didn't leave?
No, they didn't actually leave, but two out of. Yes, it's-
Obviously, they're being living in the district, they're playing church, it's-
Yes, that's correct.
Anything else? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, and the last item is an update on Take Your Legislator to School Month. In 2015, the Arkansas General Assembly adopted a resolution designating September as Take Your Legislator to School Month and encourage districts to plan activities where their local legislators could come and be a part and see what their district is doing. We've had several opportunities for our legislators to join us. You may know about a few. We've asked all of the legislators who represent a piece of our district to attend one of our board lunches in September and then do a tour of the School of Innovation if they wanted to. You'll know that Representative Grant Hodges joined us at last week's board lunch and he and Representative Jana De La Rosa came and toured the School of Innovation after that. Representative Lance Eads is going to join us next week at our board lunch and then tour the School of Innovation if he would like. I know he was probably out there today, so he may not need that tour. Several schools have hosted events that include Harbor High School on September 9th, and they had Representative Eads, Representative Lundstrom, and Representative De La Rosa, and also staff members of Representative Bozeman and Walmatt that came and spent a good part of the day with them. And they report that that was very beneficial for everyone. Also, Smith Elementary on the 19th, which was just yesterday, hosted Representative Greg Letting at their school. Going forward, if you have any input on what you'd like to see in our events with our legislators in September, I'll be happy to hear them and we'll plan events next September. Do you have any questions?
If kids have moved in to EM, or answered the question, were EM to attend to the new-
Yes, there were a few in that, I believe, on each one, if they wanted to go to School of Innovation, they were listed there. We don't ask that when they transfer in. Sometimes it's just volunteered. So there may have been more that are actually there, but we know at least four.
Well, good evening, Board and Dr. Rollins. I have four items for you this evening. The first item is the monthly update for the various building projects that we have in place. As you can see from the information that you have, we're virtually finished with the- As you can see from the information that you have, we're virtually finished with the Children's Nap Elementary in terms of payment. We do have some holdback money there, that we will be paying once all the checklists are signed off. School of Innovation and Ambele Passage, you can see there as well. Any questions on that? Okay, if there aren't any other questions, the next item that I have for you, Board, is just to comment on the board election. As you know, today is the day of the annual school election. However, because we did not have a millage question on the ballot, changing of the millage, and we had an unopposed board member, we were able to just have early voting and absentee voting. And it's my understanding, I've been assured, that a vote has been cast in this election. Okay, there has been. We're waiting to see how they voted.
No write-ins?
So, they do not release official results till after this evening, but I think that we'll all, we'll be in good shape there.
Board, the next item that I have for you this evening is a request approval for the 2016-2017 fiscal budget. And I have presented that information to you in the board information that you received. Just let me point out a couple of things to you, if I could. You will notice on the page, that's a summary of the 1617 budget summary, it shows revenue of one-hundred-and-ninety million for Funds 1, 2, and 4, and expenditures of one-hundred-and-ninety-one and five. So, at first glance, you would think that we're deficit spending. I do not see that to be the case. The reason we have to do that is because our restricted funds that are included in our carryover amount total about one-and-a-half million. And when we rebudget, we have to rebudget all of that carryover like we're going to spend it all. That's not going to happen. So, that's why that looks the way it does. I do not anticipate deficit spending at all. As you know, it is our practice in our district not to budget student growth. And so, if you'll turn over to the revenue comparison page, you'll see that there is no growth money budgeted here. You will see that we've budgeted about 1.7 million in an increase in property taxes, around a three percent increase. I'm a little anxious, I'm wondering if I got a little too aggressive. I don't think I did, because last year, the receipts were down a little bit, so typically, they'll rise a little bit the following year. So, I think I'll be okay. You will notice that the increase that was, I think someone mentioned earlier about the increase in NSL funding, it generated quite a bit of money for us, going to that next tier of funding. So, that's around 2.8 million. And then, we continue to work hard at identifying all the children that are eligible for alternative learning funds, and so that increased quite a bit as well. Overall, increase to revenue is around three percent. The expenditure compare, the expenditure summary page, it's up a little bit more than that, around seven percent. That would be assuming that we spend every dollar in every category, which we typically do not do. And then, as you know, this has been a heavy year for our staffing, with the opening up of an additional elementary, and continuing to expand the School of Innovation. Okay. I'm rambling on quite a bit here. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Just to point out a couple of things on the expenditure side, and I'll give you a chance to ask those questions in just a minute. But, on the expenditure side, under operations and maintenance and student transportation, the increase there is a little high, but it's just because you never know what kind of winter you're going to have for utilities. We did open two major buildings, so, you know, make sure we have enough money budgeted in utilities. And on the fuel, we've enjoyed lower, low fuel prices for a while, but we never know what tomorrow will bring. So, did want to budget a little extra there.
If we introduce, if it drops below seventy, what kind of effect would it have?
If we introduce, drops below seventy, then we would go back down to the level that we were at last year, which was around seven-and-a-half percent. So, it's pretty significant for us to, as Dr. Rollins and I just had a discussion about this today, it's very important that we maintain where we were, not just for this fact, but because we want all the children that are eligible to participate, obviously, so.
It takes a couple of weeks?
I'm sorry. The date that they go by is October the 1st, and that falls on a Saturday, so I think we have on the 3rd. So, whatever applications we have in hand in the Child Nutrition Office on October the 3rd can be counted toward this. And I think Dr. Cleveland alluded to earlier, we have around, last I saw, was seventeen-hundred students eating still in the grace period, that we call, that ends next week. And by my calculations, rough calculations, if we had a thousand of those sign up, then we'd be okay. And I'm very hopeful and optimistic that we will do that.
What is the biggest thing that's keeping us from getting that done earlier? Is it the parents just not cooperating, getting the information in, or what?
Well, you know, I would say, maybe not the word is not cooperating, but maybe procrastinating, because their child does eat free for the first thirty days, and it's, you know, until...
If you tell me my kid's going to quit getting food, I think I'm going to get my fork filled up.
Yes. Well, and we're working on that. In fact, Ms. Godfrey told me that she's sending home, or sending out calls this evening, advising parents again of this date that's coming up next week. So, we're doing all we know to do to encourage them to go ahead and get it in and not wait to the last minute.
I think you said this, but probably Texas this year went up a 30%?
Well, it was a little less than three.
A little less than three, okay. Be a little aggressive.
Yeah, you know, that was one of those, I can't see the forest for the trees, kind of a thing, until I put it down here on paper, I was like, oh, okay, so that, no, but I'll be okay. We'll be okay.
I know, it looks like the largest increase is under other support.
Shoot, yes. And Dr. Rollins has asked me the exact same thing. You will notice, it's not a lot of money there in the overall budget. And I told him I would look that up and have him an answer, and I have not done it. But I will. I will give you an answer for that. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what that is. Which category were you asking about, Kathy? I'm sorry.
Fun number two, next to the last.
Okay.
Hundred-and-sixty percent?
It's only 300,000 of 190 million. I'm sorry, that was kind of, I'm sorry. Yes, I will find an answer, Ms. McFetridge.
She just came with salary.
I'm sorry, I don't know, yeah. Oh, my, okay.
I said some really nice things about you to the press, but I'm fixing to take them all back.
Any other questions that I could snap at you about? Well...
Say, his name is Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y.
I'm calling to approve the 2016-17 fiscal new budget.
And she's still so kind to me.
Isn't that nice of her? All right. We have a motion by Mrs. McFetridge, and a second by Mr. O'Enby. Is there any further discussion about our budget? Any other questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will you scrape through again, Kelly?
And then, the last item I have for you this evening is the monthly financials for the month of August. They're looking pretty good, I think, so that's good. I do want to point out, there are a couple of weird things there. You'll see like a negative on the revenue under federal, and that's because I have to book receivables in last year, and then I have to reverse them, and they haven't gotten us our money yet, so that's why it looks funny like that. The money is coming, I will take care of it. It's just a timing thing for right now. I hope that explanation made sense.
Hey, Kelly? A couple or three months back, you asked for a couple of expenditures, a really large amount, already moved. There were a couple again this month.
Yes, yes.
Total about fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yes. Well, I'll tell you, on one of those, we made a duplicate payment, so we voided that second check. So, that was one of them. And then, the first one, it was for a specific project out at Southwest Junior High. It's my understanding, Dr. Cleveland maybe will explain this better than I, the gas lines were in the ground and had rusted, they were not repairable, and so they had to be moved to overhead. And so, that was an unusual expenditure there.
Well, that related to what?
No, no, no.
Anything else? Anybody like to make a motion? There we go. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Dodson, a second by Mrs. Cook, to approve August budget. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Brown? How are you?
I'm good. I know you guys were a flexing, because I'm finishing up, so I'm here. I'd just like to start by saying, please accept our condolences, Dr. Rollins and Joe. A donation was made to the Springdale Education Foundation on behalf of Springdale Education Association. I don't really have anything necessarily to talk about, although I've been listening with interest. The lunch forums, just a suggestion, and I know there's a lot of confidentiality rules, but we do have parent-teacher conferences next week, and I know that sometimes my parents need help filling out things, or sometimes my kids don't see their parents because of the shift that they work until the weekend. So, it's just a thought that if we had somebody in the schools that might help them fill it out, we might be able to reach that number, since they will be coming in next week. Because my parents all come in eventually. All right. Sonora Middle School, now Charlene is my instructional facilitator. She's awesome. She spoke earlier tonight. Any questions about...
That's a great suggestion.
Anything else? Yeah, I don't think it's, I think it's sometimes a lack of being able to read and understand what's on there.
Kelly, that's something we really need to be attentive to. Thank you.
See, I'm glad you were here.
Me too. I missed it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
For sticking it out the whole time, that's good.
All right.
I think that's it. Anybody else? We're adjourned.